Executive session, I got a motion to adjourn executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move now to number four, fiscal budget 2025-2026. Fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. One budget workshop regarding the presentation and discussion of the 2025-2026 preliminary budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will have our financial director give the presentation for your proposed expenditures by department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and directors that are here. In front of you, you have the hard copies. And then up on all the screens, you can see our presentation. This again is just proposed expenditures. We're going to start with the general fund. Just a couple notes as we get started. One thing that we did this year is all health insurance for every department. Per person, we raised to be the full family. Just in case we have a departure of somebody. Per person, we raised to be the full family, just in case we have a departure of somebody who happens to be on single coverage and then we have a new employee who comes in that wants family. Well, then that takes us over budget. So that is one thing that in all our departments, our health insurance has gone up a little bit due to the fact that we're trying to make sure that we don't go over budget on health insurance. Mr. Kramer, myself, Finance and all directors have met three, four, five times depending on the department. And we've gone over all of the budgets. We've gone over and put in what is needed and not what is wanted. So we trimmed our budget a lot this year so that it can be more of what is needed. And at this point, even though this is still a working budget, all departments do balance except for water. So starting with our non-departmental, what you'll see is last year our non-departmental expenditures were fifteen million, three thirty-six, seven fifteen. In reserves, we started with ten million, four hundred and sixty thousand, six oh four. We also had our NAD Bank reserves and then we had that large capital of 1.9 million for the administrative services building. This is what Mr. Kramer called it the other day instead of the bank building or the chase building. It's now the administrative services building. If you'll look at for twenty-six, our expenditures for non-departmental are seventeen million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Reserve is twelve million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two. That's an increase of two million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven fifty-eight, which is very, very good. We always want to make sure that we have, that our reserve can grow every year and it has grown a large amount this year. The NAD Bank reserve is still there and the cost is at 1.89 for the administrative services building. For the mayor's budget, in 2025, it was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, six oh seven. And for fiscal year 26, the proposed expenditures are a hundred and ninety and forty-nine dollars, a hundred and ninety thousand, forty-nine dollars. For council expenditures for 25, it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine sixty-five and for 26, it's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five sixty-nine.
Question. Is this interactive?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. It's very interactive. That's what we're here for. Sergio's over here taking notes of anything that is brought up so that we can take it back and work on numbers again. Sorry, forgot that part. Just kept going. So please, if you have any questions or suggestions or comments, please let us know. Okay. No, it went down. It went down about three thousand dollars. For city manager expenditures, in this budget for 25, it was six hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven. For 26, we're proposing nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty. Most of that increase comes from the grants management program for about 30 grand a year. We have the grants writing company that actually helps us write them at forty thousand. We have our lobbyist that's about three thousand a month. We've also increased by one position. The safety officer that was hired this year has been put in as a position at ninety thousand, five forty with EREs and two interstate electric marquees and a hundred and fifty thousand each. So that's three hundred thousand total. Any questions or comments on that one?
Right now, Mr. Doyle, we used it for one time, five thousand dollars. And they are writing a grant for five million dollars for streetlights, which is due by the end of June.
Yes.
It's called Safe Streets and we should hopefully see how the results work on that. And I figure if we spend five thousand to get five million, that's why I want to continue just having the budget there to utilize this company. So writing our grants. Thank you. But I put it under my department so I can oversee everything that comes into grants. And you'll see further down the road on, since we're talking about grants, we'll jump on that right now. We are moving the grants, all the grants from this point forward will run under the financial office, the business office. In the past, it was out, every department is coming back. It'll be under the auspice of Finance Department and the City Manager.
But you'll get the request from each department.
For grants?
For grants.
Good question. Each department had attended a training with the new grant company that we had. I believe they were over two hours long, correct, directors? Yes. So from this point forward, Mayor, they have the opportunity to sign up for grant notifications that would fit each of their department. If they choose to choose one of those grants, they will bring it back to the group here will decide and say, yes, that would be a good grant investment with the grant company. The grant company is not going to just write grants, just to write grants. They're going to say, you know, your probability is about 80%, which is a good for grants. We'll go ahead and do that. So there is a structure under this process. It's just not going to be just anybody just doing it. It's going to be structured through again the offices of City Manager and Finance Department. But the directors do have access to any grants that they may see pop up.
Go ahead, Mr. [inaudible].
The lobbyist three thousand dollar monthly, is that in-house or is that the?
Oh, that's the gentleman, his name is Mark Barnes and he's right now working on a five million dollar funding for our streets along with the South 32 and there's two lobbyists and I believe I just chatted with him and he met with the governor's group last week. So they're working on trying to shore up the, as I said in the present, my presentation at the last council meeting, to shore up the three streets, the two streets, Frank Reed Avenue, Mariposa Ranch Road and Industrial Park Road. So right now, if I figure we, what, for this year, eighteen thousand, because I got them for six months. See how it works. Hopefully that works out that we get that funding.
So that's for six months only?
Yes, it's three thousand a month. And, and by law, just so you know, and I don't want to say that it's all because it's me, but by law, it has to come through the City Manager's office. He explained to me that as a council, you guys are not able to have a lobbyist and he is only a state lobbyist. There are separate lobbyists for federal. I think Ms. Montiel had a question.
Go ahead.
Next is the finance expenditures from 2025. Our budget was one million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and five. Our proposed budget for 26 is one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-two. Couple of the highlights, it does show an increase in bank fees. The city pays all credit card processing fees for anyone who uses a credit card to pay any of their utilities or registration fees. So the city absorbs all of those and they are increasing. So we have increased our budget by another fifty thousand for that. We've also increased three positions.
I'll just throw notes out there, just so you know, that all other entities are charging for customer use, be it the other government entities around us. We are the only entity that gives, will take the charge, just an FYI.
We're increasing by three positions. The grant coordinator, Mr. Kramer spoke about the grants coming to be centralized under Finance. So we would be, we're asking for the increase of the grant coordinator position. And then the two water meter readers that are currently housed with the Water Department will come over and be under Finance and will work with revenue. They do most of their work with revenue anyway. So this puts them, housing them in the department that they, they should be housed in.
Jane, one question. On the City Manager, we had the Grant Management Program. Is that different from the Coordinator?
Yes.
Because you had.
Yeah, the, yeah, the program, it is itself that will be housing the grants and the grant applications. And the Grant Coordinator will be overseeing the housing of the grants, working with the company writing the grants. For instance, the grant that we're talking about, the Safe Streets that Mr. Doyle asked, our Grant Coordinator is meeting with the grant company, going through the processes of doing the legwork, sort of say, to obtain the grant. So that's what the Grant Coordinator will be doing. Also working with currently the grants that the Police Department has all their grants. She will be working concurrently with the Police Department in the management of the grants as well. So again, we're bringing it back into Finance. So the Grant Coordinator will oversee this. This is a new position, but is my direction to try to reach out to getting these grants because it's very important to offset from the MNO, our maintenance and operations budgets that we're talking about. So the grants right now are only sitting with the Police Department. We hope to get more grants for every other department, much like with Fire Department and anyone else, Parks and Recs, Library, whatever grants we can get, Mr. Mayor. That person will oversee those grants, working along with the grant company.
Go ahead, Jane.
Any other questions for Finance?
That, I guess, so that's been a effective means supporting all the grants, underwriting more applications that want to be made by each different department. There's no control.
Yes, Mr. Doyle, that, that's exactly what you're, what you're saying is we want not so much control, but just to keep support. Support and understanding of what we're doing. So when, if we do win and get grants, we're coming forward to council and saying, hey, this is what we've got. This is what the presentation, here's what we're doing. It's more, again, we have, the word I guess would be open books, as we want to say. It'll be more clarity for each and every one of you. For instance, this grant that we're getting for five million dollars, once we, if we do get it, cross our fingers. Of course, then we'll bring that presentation to what it's going to be utilized for. But that whole objective is to replace all the light, streetlights that are running on our current system that's costing the city a lot of money in electrical costs. Right now, the average, I believe, a day is fifteen dollars, if I remember right. And TEP is coming down. I'm meeting them within a couple of weeks. They're bringing, Tom, Tom, the guy that I think you met, or he was at a presentation here. And he's bringing TEP people down. If we get LEDs, you're cutting it down 80%. So I think that if we can get that grant, it certainly is going to help the city offset some costs as well.
Uh, Ms. Montiel.
Mr. Kramer, I know, I'm, I'm turning it on, just one second. Um, on here, on the fines and penalties, the city's paying twenty, well, you're allocating next year for a twenty thousand dollar increase in fees and penalties. I realize right now that the bank fees are increasing, so because we pay our credit card processing fees. So why are we doing something that other municipalities don't do? Because we're a business. So what does it take, Ms. Rasties, for us to start? Does it take a council order or something for us to start charging those fees? So if we come in, you know, use our credit card, we shouldn't be absorbing that.
Yes, that, that would be a council decision. If council wants to include that cost as part of, you know, those, those different payments, that it would just be a council decision and then notification to the customers. You typically want to provide, you know, a couple of months notification, hey, beginning in, on July 1st, the city's going to start charging and passing, or passing through the, the credit card charging fees. You know, because I can't imagine if there'd be an increase by 50,000, what the, what the current total cost is.
Oh, it's a lot. It's a lot.
And people are using more and more credit cards than they used to. Ever since COVID, we've seen a huge increase in credit card usage, whether it be through the third-party website, making their payments, coming in here, making them over the telephone. There's more and more people who are calling in their payments with their credit cards than ever before. It's, if you include between the bank fee plus the third-party fee, it's almost 5% that the city absorbs on every single credit card. And if you're paying a thousand dollar bill, your 5% is pretty high. So it's, it's just about 5% by the time you add the two fees in.
Okay, so Mr. Kramer, so I, I will take direction from the attorney that in the future will do a council, will discuss this. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montiel. That's, I've been asking that question for a few years and I've never gotten an answer. So thank you.
Well, it's not just that. Let me correct you that. So as a, as a Finance Director, those are the things that we need to know. If you've been asking, then you should put it on the agenda. I mean, you should ask the, whoever the manager seems, happens to be. And those are the things, you can ask all the questions you want, but it's, you have to have the vision and say, you know what? This is costing the taxpayer a lot of money. So I'm going to talk to the City Manager to discuss this with council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Finance? The Human Resource in 2025, their budget was three eighty-seven, seven twenty-five and in 26, it went down to three sixty-three, four seventy-five. So this past year, there was thirty-five thousand that was in the budget for the comp study. And so this coming year, of course, it doesn't have to be paid. So the drop was basically from the comp study.
On the fiscal year 25, that three hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven twenty-five, does that include the salary?
Yes.
Yes.
The three eighty-seven, seven twenty-five for 25 included, it's all of the salaries plus whatever office expenses they have and the comp study that was all together last year. And of course, the remodel that we did, all the desks and stuff that were purchased.
The comp study is, is done, is completed, but at this time, I will get that as soon as we have that presentation. I, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say that. So I'll just say that I can certainly bring that back to you. And the, and for the record, just so you know, and I don't want to put the council at any position and the directors, I did not share this information with them. But we, that third column, when it says proposed salary increases, I never discussed that with them because there was no discussion about getting salary increases because I wasn't proposing that. I just put that in there for your discussion and information. But as of right now, I have not told the directors or employees that this council is going to give you a salary increase. I don't want to handcuff you or tie your hands up to say that that was proposed because it's not. Again, I, as the City Manager, is only giving you information based on, again, I look at school districts, what they're doing, the hiring agency or government entities around us, and I just put that there. But by no means am I saying that column is there because again, you can ask the directors. I did not discuss salary increases with them, only to bring that is because it's a discussion, it's a study session of what it would cost the city, just an FYI, because I, I don't want to mislead anyone and feel that you're obligated as a council to give any raises. Thank you.
So going back on that, so when you, when you say fiscal year 26, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, four seventy-five, what would have been the difference fiscal year 25 without the salary increase?
So this, this three sixty-three, four seventy-five would be with no raises right now. The only raise that is built into any department is that 1% that was passed by the council from the last comp study. And that's only for the employees that have been here under 10 years or make under that minimum amount of the last comp study. That is the only raise that is in any department at this point in time because that was a council order that we still follow until a new council order comes around. The third column would be if you propose to do raises, and that's why we're not focusing on the third column because we're just trying to focus right now on expenditures plus your current salaries where we are as of right now.
Well, let me rephrase my question. What was the base proposed for the for the human resources without the salaries? Like, if we we're looking at three sixty-three for for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, what was their base for five twenty-five? I mean, for twenty twenty-five, was it three sixty or three sixty-three? What was the difference without the salary?
Without salaries in there? We would have to go back and run, we can run that report that would pull all salaries out. So then it would just be the M and O costs.
Because see, we can't compare if it if it's going up or down.
Well, it so the twenty-five one, the three eighty-seven you see is all salaries that included the five percent that was passed last year and all the department expenses. The one for twenty-six is carrying all the salaries over plus their department expenses. And the only increase would be anybody who would get qualified for that one percent. So what you're looking at is the exact same, we compared the exact same numbers, but that five percent was in the budget for twenty-five. It was the past budget. So right now, for twenty-six, you're seeing as if there was no salary raises as of right now in that middle column, this three sixty-three number. So their budget overall did decrease.
It's the everything is M and O, maintenance and operations of everything. And it's a base. It's like, if you go back to my department, you saw the increases because I I encumbered some of the costs there, not just salaries, but also what we're trying to do with, as I said, with grants. So we put all expenditures in that F Y twenty-six. I didn't do line by line because I wasn't going to do supplies and materials and every other miscellaneous thing that we do, gas, travel, conferences, training, all the stuff that is there. We just I just put the major stuff in there, our major expenditures, I'm not going to say stuff, expenditures and or positions we have added for each department. So you'll have the maintenance and operations from F Y twenty-five. That was with all expenditures from this past year, including the salaries, including the increases that council gave the year before. F Y twenty-six is anything additional and or the salaries that would stay flat or not flat, but stay the same for this next fiscal year.
Any other questions on the human resource?
Just out of curiosity, on that, with the proposed increase, which is about ten-five. So we're it's the comparison here is because it's a small department, few employees. And the way they have it set up would be like in a tier thing, the more you make, the less you get raised.
Since you're opening up that can.
Okay, no, okay.
No, I'm gonna answer, I'll answer it.
In my mind, I'm trying to.
But I but I would, this is like a discussion.
Every department.
This is a discussion, and you need to know the information. When it came to talking about that, and you got to give kudos to people like yourself and everyone else that talked about being equity, equitable, tiered, whatever you're doing. That comment was said in with the two of them, and we did bring in interim H R director. Right now, your salary schedules, our salary schedules, I say your because from the last year I wasn't here. But from the years ago, the years past, whatever, the salary schedules are not, should I say, efficient? Because some people were getting years' experience, they get promoted, and then they were carrying those years' experience into the new promotion and going even higher, which we H R director said, we don't do that. You don't do that anywhere. If you move from a teacher to an assistant principal, you don't get the years' experience. You go from a teacher to an assistant principal. But the city, for some reason, was doing that and throwing it off. We are going to straighten that out as well. I'm just bringing that up because so you know the discussion we're having. Because it's important, because that does impact salaries and that does impact raises. And it does impact the equality and equity of salaries. For some people, they're going, hey, I've been here fifteen years. This person, boom, boom, boom. So we're trying to cut that out. H R director is looking at that as well, Mr. Doyle, because that's a good question. Because it's very important. And for those that move up whatever position in their departments, they'll start at that salary. They have no years' experience as being a manager. If they were right there, why do they get to carry over that experience? Now, if they came from a different city and they were a manager, now you take that into account. Just like in the school districts, if a principal comes in, they take that into account. It's the level of it. So I I you understand what I'm trying to say. Hopefully, I answered your question because it was discussed and our interim H R director is working on that. So we can bring that back to council. So we have something in plans for the future. So we do not keep doing the same thing over, over, over. Again, I'm going to stick to my words, paradigm shift. We need to change it because this is what we continue getting. So that's what we certainly were talking about that, that over here as well with the finance team and our H R interim H R director. Hopefully, that answered your question, sir.
Community development. In twenty twenty-five, their budget was four hundred and seventy-two thousand, seventy-six dollars. And for twenty-six, the proposal is six oh six, two hundred. It does include in position, an increased position of the code enforcement officer. So we currently have one code enforcement officer. We will be bringing in a second one. And then also an increase of the cost of plan reviews. So having more businesses come into town, they have to have their plans reviewed by our by our community development office. And so our costs will go up. Now, that is also recouped in the amount that we charge them for. So we have to put the expense in. We also will have the revenue that comes in. Any questions on that one?
Mr. Kramer?
George?
Mr. Kramer, on the plan reviews, that's a program, right? Fifty-five thousand?
Correct.
Yeah, that's not a person.
No.
Well, it's a program.
Well, yes, someone has to manage.
With I I A's, whatever I A's, what does it call the?
But yes, a person certainly has to manage that, and it's certainly a a path that this department has to correct.
Yes, okay.
As Hector, that you attest to that, we we did meet as a team, and we are moving in that direction to make it more thorough process for new businesses coming into this community. Not only working with Hector, but working with, I want to Christina, who's working in finance department. And I believe even you've met with keeping the, the, I should know this, I'm going to get hit and crust the head, the Chamber of Commerce. So when we bring new businesses, all three entities, being us, that department, and bringing in the new businesses, we have a pathway to help them. So this is part of that. And again, hopefully, the licenses and the fees will offset some of it. It's not going to offset all of it, of course. Well, maybe, we hope, right? Because then it'd be more businesses.
Yeah. And and Mr. Kramer, that's a great idea because one of the complaints that we've been getting and and we've been getting them for a long time is that the process to get a business license takes forever. So we, you know, I had the council, the director present on the process of obtaining a a business license from the very beginning to the very end. And somehow, the time that they get an application, which is the easiest part, but somehow, when it passes this department and it goes to that department, there is just so much time that it takes to get a business license. So if this is going to expedite it and it's going to make it smoother and it's going to be friendlier to the person that wants a business license, that's that's a great investment, fifty-five thousand. And hopefully, the people out there that are want to obtain a business license is gets it quick and it's efficient and it's friendly to get a business license in the city and all this. It doesn't take forever. We have businesses that are open that don't have a complete business license. And I've given you a bunch of names. It's one thing to say, oh, there's so many, you know, we have ten businesses opening that we hear every month. But some of them are are not, don't have a complete business license because it got stifled in some way or the other between getting the application and down there. So that's great if that's going to expedite it.
I think you just requested a presentation for our August council meeting on this program, Mr. Tapia.
Yeah. But that's a good investment, fifty-five thousand.
But I think he I think he needs to bring that presentation to you as a council, the process.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No, well, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. One of the things, I I know that that wherever the enforcement officer, where that position is going to be, it seems like it's going to be pretty busy. But are are some of the duties also going to be involving that officer? The since it's tied in with the plan reviews, like when there's a project going on and it's falling behind, is he going to look into it, what what the the problem is, like downtown, there are the bathrooms and stuff like that, you know? I'm still wondering when, why, why haven't been finished.
The restroom presentation is coming for May, so you'll get that. That's already on, that's.
But is that going to be part of one of the duties for the enforcement officer?
We're going to expand the duties on everything of the processes, working with that department. Certainly, called the punch list.
Okay, yeah, all right. You'll be a busy person. Thank you.
Well, that's why we need to.
Yeah, go ahead, Gene.
The next department is city clerk. In twenty twenty-five, the salary was, I'm sorry, the expenditures were ninety-six thousand, seven thirty-two. And in twenty-six, it's ninety-three thousand, eight forty-six.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to just fill you in.
Yeah, good.
That position was revised with your interim H R hour interim H R director. It was not revised in sixteen years. So I did some revisions. Obviously, it had the city manager involved rather than council. And of course, somewhat with the attorney. So I did, we did revise that. The interim H R director did, I believe, with is already being posted as of yesterday or today for that position. So when that position starts getting interviews or applicants, of course, it will be up to council how you want to set up that process of hiring for a new city clerk.
Go ahead.
Next is M I S. In twenty twenty-five, their budget was nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty. For twenty-six, the proposed budget is one million, ninety-four thousand, one nineteen. There is an increase in services and equipment repair. As we know, everything's going up and computers break, monitors break, a lot of things break. We also have software programming increasing. We have new programs coming into the city that is absorbed into the M I S budget and capital is an increase of thirty-seven thousand. M I S is on a five-year capital rotation, and it's, I know it has been presented to the council in the past. And so this year is just the next year in his step of five years.
And when I say capital, that means those people that have a five-year-old computer, yay, you get a new one this year.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kramer, can you tell me a little bit about, I know you've mentioned in the past about getting the inventory in place. Is that the seventy-one thousand dollars, that program to do? Okay.
No.
Yeah.
That that's a good question, councilwoman, that that we do have the program in there, and that is part of our computer, or excuse me, our whole software we have that we are hopefully, I keep pushing, asking, it should be by next month. I'm looking at Jose, correct? So we hope to get that going. And council, that that is something that as I, as you asked me and what I've said in the beginning about where we need asset control, and it's certainly going to be part of finance department as well. But we will be looking at that and actually creating a software program to start all asset control and tagging and processing, getting a warehouse in place to be doing that. Because it's very important for this city to have that function. But thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, that's more of the budget, but certainly we'll bring that because it is, we may spend more, but we're obviously it's for good reasons.
Go ahead.
Next is the city attorney's expenditures. Last year, the budget for twenty-five was four hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. For twenty-six, the proposal is five eighty-six, five seventy-four. We were given some new numbers just this morning from Mr. Estes. So the budget for twenty-six will adjust a little bit. Part of this increase is when we first hired the attorney, you know, it was a hundred and eighty a year. Well, now we have Mr. Estes coming down once a week, and so that is an additional charge that we have expenditure in this budget. And then we still have one position that is budgeted that is not filled. So they have two in the office, and there still is a third position that's in there that was decided last year to keep the position but not fill it at the time.
And Mayor and Council, I can tell you that we'll go ahead and remove that position.
Okay.
We don't need an additional position in the attorney's office. But I also wanted to point out some of the numbers that I I forwarded this morning. I was a little delayed in in getting my review done. But there should be an additional thirty, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars savings being deducted from costs associated with professional services and contract services, which includes training, C L Es, bar dues, all those different things that normally would get paid for for an in-house attorney. So essentially, that's going to be, there's going to be a substantial reduction there. And in addition to that, with that budget position being reduced, you should actually see a, according to my calculation, but I'm I'm just an attorney, I just use a calculator. So with with that thirty-nine thousand dollar savings plus the the removal of that budget position, that should take it back down to forty-eight, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which would hopefully be less than than last year. And that's the goal, is to to be fiscally responsible. And I just wanted to point out, you know, essentially, what you're what you're looking at with, and I I went back and looked at the budget from twenty-three and twenty-four. When you had two attorneys in-house with attorney salaries and E R Es and those additional costs for training and travel and conferences, you were looking at about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year for that office for those two two attorney positions. Whereas with the contract, you've got, the base contract is one eighty. If you have me here once a week, that takes it up to two fifty-two. That's still almost, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars less. And then the, what I like to tout as the the bonus benefit there is, is it's not just me. You have a firm of fifteen attorneys that are able to work on and handle different things for this department. So I think it it shows it's a, it's a great service that, you know, you you can go from having two attorneys and you're, those are the only attorneys that you have at a higher cost. Or you can have a a pool of attorneys for for lower cost. And then, of course, you know, you don't have to pay for the 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 travel, the C L Es, all those other things that are typical with with in-house counsel because that's absorbed, you know, through through the cost of our firm. So so with with those adjustments, it it should look better than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Next, next is our city court. In twenty twenty-five, the expenditures were seven hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. And the proposed for twenty-six is seven hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three. This is the year of their audit. So I did put that in because their audit for court is only every three years. So you'll see their budget go up and down based on that. And they also have a lot of newer employees that did qualify for that one percent. So that is the main reason that their budget looks higher.
And I I just also wanted to point out, I haven't talked to to Gene about it yet because we are just basically figuring this out within the.
And I just also wanted to point out, I haven't talked to Gene about it yet, because we are just basically figuring this out within the office. There is an additional cost associated with prosecution that has typically been covered by the county. Most counties pay for these costs. It's called a Rule eleven evaluation, it's a competency evaluation. So if, if an individual gets charged with a crime, and there is a concern of, as to whether or not that individual is competent and understands, you know, that, what the crime is and things like that. The judge or the attorney representing the defense counsel can request a, a Rule eleven evaluation, a competency evaluation. Typically, the county pays for that. It's come to my attention within the last month or two that that cost is being pushed back on to the city for the magistrate court. And that cost can be substantial, it can run upwards of three thousand dollars for an evaluation. So that's one, one additional cost we're looking at as to whether or not that cost, or we put some, you know, I, I've looked and typically, in a year's period of time, you can go from anywhere from, you know, just a couple, two or three Rule eleven evaluations to six or seven. So you don't, you don't know what that amount's going to be, but my suggestion is going to be that we include, you know, at least, you know, ten thousand dollars to cover two or three of those evaluations, and most likely include that in the court costs, the court expenses, because it doesn't make sense to have that come out of the attorney's expenses. If, if the courts, it's either the court is ordering it, or the court's ordering it on behalf of a request from the defendant. And so just logistically, it would make it a lot simpler if that cost was, was paid by, by the court. But I haven't had that conversation with the court yet, so that may or may not be included with court expenses or with city attorney expenses. But that is an additional cost that we're seeing, because the county is not, not willing or not agreeing to pick up that cost and expense where typically they should, because a Rule eleven evaluation goes up to the superior court level, because that's where it gets ordered, and that's a county level. So, but there is a, there is a provision in the statute that says that the, the city could be responsible for, for those costs. And then that's, on the city attorney's side, that's another thing that I will coordinate with the, with the contract prosecutor, is to look at and evaluate a case. If, if we have a case where an individual's charged with, you know, misdemeanor trespass or, or something, and there was no, no damage, or no one was involved or something, and this individual has, you know, mental issues, and there's a request for a Rule eleven evaluation. On a two hundred and fifty-dollar charge fine for misdemeanor, I would prefer to, you know, do some type of probation or dismissal as opposed to incur those costs. So we'll look at, at those issues as well. But there are times where, you know, you have somebody who, who's just having some mental issues, and they caused damage, or they hurt somebody, and you have to go through the process, and you have to do those evaluations. But we're going to try to keep those to a minimum.
Thank you, Ms. Vercis. Go ahead.
Next is the library. In 2025, the overall expenditures were eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. And the twenty-six proposed numbers is three, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and six. They're, they are asking for all new furniture in the county libraries, and then finishing up the final section of the flooring in the main library. I put the number on the bottom that the county IGA, they will actually be reimbursing us based on the IGA of four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So almost fifty percent of the entire library budget comes back to us through the county IGA. Any questions on library?
Could it be fifty percent?
It's fifty percent except for any capital that deals with the main building. So we have to take the total, we have to subtract capital that's in the main building, and then it's fifty percent of that. All the county capital is fifty percent, not the capital from the main Nogales building. And Denise has agreed, so I did it right.
Is that the same thing that we do with the animal shelter?
Yeah, for them, it's fifty percent. So they, and we'll get that number, it'll be up here in a little bit, we'll get that number next week.
But, Gene, but the capital new furniture in all county libraries, thirty thousand.
So they would pay part of that thirty, so fifteen, fifty percent of that thirty thousand is part of the county.
Yeah, but why aren't you putting just fifteen thousand?
Because we have to pay the full amount.
And then we get reimbursed?
And then we get reimbursed.
Okay, so just, it's not mentioned there, but.
Yes, yeah, it's all a reimbursement.
Just assume it, okay. Thank you.
Next is police. In 2025, their budget was ten million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The proposed budget for twenty-six is eleven million, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. They're only asking for two trucks for parking enforcement to replace the two vehicles we currently have. It also includes the stipends. If you guys remember when they did the, their contracts in the fall, after we'd already done our budget, it included stipends for certain police officers for certain reasons, for different things. So it was not in the budget of last year, because it happened after the budget. This year, we're putting those stipends in the budget, so we have good, correct numbers. And then also, the increase of the pension is two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So that was the main increases of what happened with the police department. Any questions there?
Go ahead.
Next is fire. Fire for twenty-five was ten million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. For twenty-six, it's ten million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. We have included in this year's budget, three vehicles that would actually be on a five-year lease to own. The first year, we would pay nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, which part of that, or most of that, is actually carry forward from twenty-five into twenty-six. We have the two ambulances that are finally going to get to us after two years in our budget books. We're finally going to get them. The pension increase is of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and we have increased where we, on their contractual services for hydrant repair. The chief, he just stepped out, but the chief is pushing to make sure that all of our hydrants in the city of Nogales work correctly, and we want to get it done as soon as possible. So we're pushing to get them all done in this next fiscal year, or as many as possible.
And, and just so you know, the chief did an inventory, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the number was thirty-six? If I remember right, hydrants?
There's over a hundred that need service, but there's sixty-three that are out of service.
Sixty, see, I twisted my numbers, okay, yes, sixty-three.
Out of what?
Out of a, out of a hundred and.
How many hydrants?
Five and six hundred, twelve.
Hydrants. Thank you.
This also includes three current positions that he has that are EMT firefighter or paramedic firefighters that will be moved into engineers. To keep us efficient, we need to have three more engineers to be able to drive our vehicles. So this does include taking three lower positions and moving them up into higher positions. They're reclassifying them.
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Kramer, on the three vehicles, on lease programs, and it's a five-year lease to own, is that, is that what Mr. Loewy is recommending?
Yes, in fact, we had that discussion, the three of us.
Okay.
And that's what we both, we were looking to one or the other, and that was our best option. So it's had, probably at less cost. I think the percentage rate, the finance rate was four percent? Four point five.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Fire questions? Next is Nogales rights. For twenty-five, the total budget was two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. In twenty-six, we're proposing a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. We did get our new vehicle finally, and we are now asking for an additional driver, so that we will have two vehicles out at all times. So even though the entire budget went down, because we don't have this hundred and ten thousand dollar van any longer in our budget, because we bought it, we do have, we're asking for an additional position to drive our vans.
So the old one gonna get painted and all that, because it was very bad conditions?
Yes, in fact, I know the quotes have come in, and it's getting done.
So that's in, in the budget?
It's being done right now, like it's in this budget.
Okay. And the new one, when does, when is it going to function?
We are waiting for the, the signature, and that's it. Once we have the coordination with the police department to send the old vehicles for painting, we'll put it severing down.
Thank you.
Next is facilities. The budget for twenty-five was one million, three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. For twenty-six, the proposed budget is one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. This does include repairing roofs, roofs on Public Works, City Hall, and the Senior Center. Putting insulation in the warehouse walls, new flooring at Public Works and CID. Redoing the grease trap at the Senior Center, the elevator maintenance at the Administrative Services Building, plumbing at City Hall, and the second floor of the Pumari Alta Museum. Redoing the renovations, including plumbing and the possibility of an elevator lift.
Just an FYI with the new position that we have, and by the way, he's not in here, Leo, but that's fine. He is now OSHA certified. So with that stating is, he is involved in everything and anything to do with the buildings. And certainly with what you're seeing here with the roofing, everything to that effect, he's going around. So any improvements or any things that we need to change in our buildings, he will have a hand in that. So that is his, part of his first duties. And actually, he's, his second duty is he's training all the, working with NPD, working with the group that heads by Eddie Jung on Western Avenue. We're making sure that all those gentlemen and ladies that do the flags and the stop signs are going to be certified OSHA people. So that'll be a good thing as well. So I just want to give that feedback, because it's important that you know, I'm talking too close to the mic, that you know that that position is also involved in anything and everything from this point forward with buildings. Because it is, it is important that we stay in tune with OSHA as well. Look, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Vercis.
Okay, I have a question, I, I mean, the way I see fifty thousand, and I'm thinking, what is that going to cover? You're putting in an elevator, and I've been familiar with the whole fire department, because when, again, in the past, we put money onto it. But that was like ten years ago, and, and of course, you have to maintain it. I don't know how, if that includes like making sure your plumbing's okay, that you have the adequate heating and cooling system in there. There was a lot of other things that needed, like painting and stuff, you know. Is fifty thousand enough to maintain that second floor? Is it?
That's just the basic right now, Mr. Doyle?
Can, can more be added in case?
Certainly, and certainly if we come back. And actually, the engineer from McKinstry that I'm going to meet, actually tomorrow, who's coming to do the final discussions regarding our new administration building, and I'll get those plans to you. And the next council meeting, they will be presenting, actually, just so you know, I'm only tying that in, because I told him to give me fifteen minutes as an engineer, he's going to go down and inspect that building.
I appreciate that.
So we, so we'll get a better idea of some costs, and I just put that as a, so you know what we're trying to do.
Okay, okay, it's okay, it's like, just to let us know that.
That, that's, yes, it's important. I think that all ties into with the downtown, and I'm pointing with Hector, because he was heading that group with the renovation downtown innovation, whatever you, I'm sorry, whatever. Pardon?
Revital.
Revitalization, yes. All the words, I know, all the words. Nevertheless, it's important that we do enhance that top, because I think if we do, we can open that up. I believe it's for the older firefighters, and maybe possibly, as you know, a legion club, opening that up as an establishment.
For you, Mr. Doyle.
Well, not just for him, yes, exactly, and it's important, this historical building. So, and that's what they asked me, I wasn't sure, and I've got the paperwork for that, I'm going to give it to this company. Because if that's the case, it may cut the cost down, because we may be able to qualify some grants for that. And they'll look for those grants for us. So just an FYI, see, there's more to the story, right? There's always, but that's those things that we're, I'm trying to do to just keep revitalization with the arc.
Oh, it's going to be a plus, and it's, you know, because it's going to, being that we got to maintain it as a historic building. Whatever we, we do, you know, windows or other things, we got to maintain the, the historic.
Part of it.
Figure of it.
Exactly, thank you. And just to tie that in, so you're going to see it, it's, it's on fleet, but I'm just going to tie that in. And I, and I just earmarked it, it's probably going to be more or less. But councilman, member Hector, asked me about the trolley. Well, you're going to see this fifty thousand, I just put that, it could be more or less, I don't know. But again, bringing that so it's full serviced, so we can actually be part of the downtown. And we are working on historical spots, that would be David, that we're working on where those locations are in this city, and start doing tours with the trolley, doing historical visits around the site. And then after it's done, they can take and go upstairs and enjoy a beverage and whatever possible food we may be serving at the historical city hall.
Go ahead, Ms. Vercis.
Well, let's sound.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Kramer. The, the grease trap at the Senior Center, it says three thousand dollars, is this just an upgrade? Or, or are we installing a new grease trap?
I would believe we're installing it, but that would be a, a question that I would get you the information back.
Okay, because three thousand for grease trap, it's an average between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars, so.
So I don't know if it's to repair it or not.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
I don't know, I'll get that, that information to you.
Do you have a question?
I have one question, Mr. Kramer, on the elevator Administrative Services Building. I know that's the Chase building, and you changed, you're calling it Administrative Services, ten thousand?
I just used that name, if council wants to call it a new name, you guys certainly could.
No, I didn't, I didn't ask for it because of that, but just so that I can get used to calling it not the Chase Bank. But is that elevator, that cost of ten thousand is to fix the elevator, right?
To get it up to.
Get it up.
Up to the OSHA standards, yes.
Okay, okay.
It does work.
It does work, yeah.
Along with the chutes that the drive-in, those do work too. So we'll have that, so people can do their transactions, just like a bank, driving in, providing that service as well.
Yeah, so now that we're talking about the future agenda items, and I'll be putting it on the agenda so that we can keep the residents also abreast of what's happening with, with this Chase Dash Administrative Service Building, because I know some of the workers here are already talking about it, but yet our community should know. So we'll put it on the agenda to tell them, this are, this is what's going to happen to your Chase Bank. It's going to become part of now a working city building.
You will be approving that contract with the presentation of the next council meeting?
Oh, there you go, okay.
With a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, thank you, okay, okay, we'll move on.
Gene, just got one question, not that the chief is here. On, on the fire chief, are we looking at, you know, the uniforms, PFAS, and all those issues with the PFAS?
Yes, PFAS is being addressed.
Okay, and there's no need to do any uniform increase or anything, because I know. Thank you, sir.
Wow.
Just wanted to make sure.
Good job, yeah. Okay.
Next is engineering. Are we finished with facilities? Okay. With engineering for twenty-five, their budget was two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three. For twenty-six, the proposed budget is three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and five. We are asking for an increase of one position, it would be called a civil engineer designer. So it'd be eighty-four thousand with the EREs. There's no capital request for twenty-six. There's no capital request for twenty-six. Along with this new position comes additional training, a computer and software and uniform, which is an additional five thousand. So the increase you see in engineering is for this one position.
He had a whole, he had a whole list, but that cut it down.
So, because Juan was asking, he had a Christmas list.
Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
He always does.
I have a question. Is, is that a, so are they trying to add another position to that department?
Yes.
Is it needed?
Yes.
Currently, there's only two employees in the engineer department. It's Mr. Geta and then Terracita. And she's a.
Plan reviewer.
Plan reviewer. So this would actually be a civil engineer designer. So part of what needs to be done in the city, it'll be done by this person. So his department will go from two to three.
Okay, so that, does that mean that, that you'll bring it up professional? Because a lot of, in the past, we've seemed to pay out for other people to do the designing or architect of a lot of things and then at the end, sometimes it comes back to the, to the department and I, it makes me wonder how those things, are, are you gonna have more, more?
I will have more input on hiring. I've been trying to step into this as well. At least for now, but yes, accreditations, training, certificates, all will be a requirement. So the city is not paying any more additional training for universities, anything to that effect because it was, no, we're just not going to do that. Yes, Mr. Doyle. To answer your question, yes.
Well, yes, thank you.
Mr. Kramer, who, saying here that we need a new position for civil engineer designer, so who is doing this, this, this work here in the city? That's my question, right behind you.
Myself.
So.
Yes, didn't we resource a lot of it out?
Right, we outsourced, so we're gonna keep it more in-house. That's what our plans are. That's what I was told. But I just wanted to make sure that Juan said that he did that. But see, this, with this, with this hiring, Mr. Bonilla, it also frees up Juan, which I had already, we've already chatted about, of getting out and about more often rather than being tied into the office. Because there's things at times that he and I've met out in the street about things and everything else. It gives him more boots on the ground, so to speak.
Well, with that said, Mr. Kramer, I do.
And, 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 and address the pictures that you send me and everything, which is good. But it, it's important. It's important that the directors, like himself, get out there and actually do that rather than being tied in doing administrative processes, which sometimes they get caught up into too much.
Then I have my follow-up question to that, Mr. Kramer, is that a while back, we, we created a new position, which is a, a project manager for the city. And it was told to us that it would free up Mr. Barsonas and Mr. Guerra's time because they couldn't be out there on the field. So now we're creating another.
Is that part of engineering?
No, that's in our public works.
So the, the project manager is only for Public Works?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay, yeah, because, you know.
Yeah.
Just said that you, we're gonna free up time for him.
Well, right, for his position, what he's doing. We'll certainly bring this back up to the Public Works.
Yeah, I know we're gonna talk later about Public Works, but Mr. Bonillas has a really good point that I was gonna bring up. Is it just in case, just to make sure and ensure, Mr. Kramer, that when we add positions, it's a cost to the city, to the city, right, to, to the overall city. And so I'm thinking, you know, when you hire and you free up somebody's position, well, sometimes directors have responsibilities to, to balance their time out. We, you and I know a little bit about balancing our time out. So when you're adding an eighty-four thousand dollar job to free up Mr. Geta, but make sure that things are being done, that the, the projects out there are being done. Because what we hear from the citizens is that, you know, this is not being done and the city's not keeping up with other municipalities and the city's not, you know, keeping up with the infrastructure projects and, and so forth. So I'm assuming with this new position, we're gonna see a lot of things moving in the community. And I trust your, your insight and your decision to hire a new position. But I guess the, we're gonna see some stuff really happening in these departments and, you know, infrastructure moving along and, and which the people will see that, you know, these things are, are, are great things that are happening at the city.
I think the key word is accountability.
There you go.
Right? And I think that each and every one of us should be held accountable for the job that we're hired to do and follow through and continue doing those jobs. And I think that, and I don't think I know from this, coming up this next fiscal year and the expectations are, are, are directors doing their jobs? That's my job. But what about the people under them? And the expectations are, are they doing their evaluations? Are they doing, following through to ensure that they're staying on top of their jobs? Is this to excuse Juan from not doing some of his work or make it easier for him? I think not, because I think that the expectations are the growth of Nogales hopefully continues and then he's out more doing things, working with, obviously with Hector and the growth of businesses and everything that would encompass that. So I hear you. I agree with you. I think the accountability is very important and it's something that they already know through my communications with them, the expectations of this. So I don't take it to, by bringing in new positions, that I'm trying to offset anybody's responsibilities or less work for them. I think it's more for them to do more work of what they should be doing and getting more accomplished for the city of Nogales and the taxpayers, what they deserve.
Other than engineering?
Go ahead.
Next is cemetery. Cemetery twenty-five, their budget was four hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For twenty-six, the proposed budget is four hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. For capital, they are requesting an additional columbarium unit being installed and paving of part of the cemetery. But overall, that budget did decrease, as you can see.
Go ahead, Ms. May.
On the additional columbarium, how many, how many niches will this?
Do we currently have, Jessica?
How many niches?
How many niches do we currently have?
About forty.
Forty, and this additional will add how many? How many?
A unit is sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
I have a question, Mr. Kramer. On the paving, that's a great idea. I, I really like the fact that the paving, I know it costs a lot of money, but I think it's worth it because I think that they've been asking, since I've been here, they've been asking for the cemetery to be improved. And one of things that they can improve in is the paving and, and making it more accessible and a little bit safer. Yeah.
Exactly.
That's a, that's a great idea.
Along those lines, is that paving maintenance or are you gonna put new pavement?
Where the dirt road is, dirt roads.
That dirt, that side dirt.
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is this asphalt or millings that we're gonna be placing on there?
That'd be a Juan question.
Yeah.
Juan?
Yeah, it will be, maybe the, the paving could be overlaid or depending on the, on the condition of the paving, but we can remove it and replace it totally.
That, that, that answer throws everything off.
Asphalt.
That, that's, that's not the answer we, I think we were looking at. You're talking about a road that's dirt being paved and he's talking about replacing pavement.
Right, yes, the question was where the dirt road is, what is that going to be?
Okay, what brand new paving?
Brand new pavement with brand new asphalt or, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the animal control. This is where we paid the county through an IGA fifty percent of their budget. This past year, it was four hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. I did speak with Mr. Chavez the other day and they are meeting next week. So I'll have a good number for fiscal year twenty-six by the time we meet again.
And an FYI, they are not building a new building, so whatever was released.
So that ten million is up?
Yes, so we're now.
Okay. That's what I was gonna ask.
No more?
No.
No doggy house, new doggy house?
Yes, I spoke with.
That's too bad.
Mr. Ch, Mr., the, gosh.
Benya?
Benya.
No, 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 no. With the county manager, thank you. Mr. Valdez.
Which one?
Mr., yeah. Yes, Mr. Valdez, sorry, Jesus, Mr. Valdez, and we are not going, they are not going to.
Good to know.
Because we would have been we too, so.
So next is Parks and Recs. In twenty-five, their budget was four million fifty-one thousand two hundred and one. For twenty-six, the proposed budget is three million nine hundred and twenty thousand and ninety-nine. This does include five hundred thousand dollars for a modular building to be placed at the rec center. So the all-city rec functions can be in one area. It also includes Apollo Duro outdoor flooring and pool refurbishing. It includes the recreational restrooms over here by our pool. Now they're outdoor restrooms, so they're not going through the building to use the restrooms. It includes backstops and dugouts at Fleischer One and Two. It includes safety netting at Memorial and Fleischer. And then Trinidad Park, we're gonna get it done after three years in our budget. Are there any questions on Park and Rec?
I, I have a, actually a request, Mr. Kramer, for Parks and Rec. Is there any chance that we can get the Parks and Rec Department a ice machine? I seen that need in the past years, working with them. If we can include in the budget for, for an ice machine at Parks and Rec. It's maybe a seven or eight thousand dollar machine from my past. I, I, so that's, I would like, because I seen in the past, working for the, for the Julys in the past experience, they need to have some type of a ice, ice machine there.
It, I guess if it serves a purpose year-round or if it's just a necessity for certain events, then maybe would, I'm not disagreeing, but certainly if it's seventy thousand and, and whether, whether or not, you know, the cost, I guess, it's, it's fine, right? That means Little League and everyone else can fill up their coolers and such.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're providing a service, so.
Has, has there been any talk on that? I recall three, four years, we, we gave back to the county down by, by Calabasas Park. We have basically almost, you could say donated to them for them to do infrastructure of parks just southwest, southeast of, of the park. The, the city owned, I think it's a hundred acres over there. And back in the nineties, the city had given them the hundred acres for them to develop. Then they, they never did it. And then I recall, I think it was four or five years ago, we gave, we had taken that property back and we gave them again twenty acres for them to develop. Obviously, I don't think it's something the city wants to develop, being outside the city limits. But they were gonna work on it and they haven't done anything. I mentioned it to, I think it was Fanning, you know, at the, at one of the meetings that we had with the CPBA and he was gonna look into it. But something we should ask them if they're ever gonna develop that, that property.
Did Mr. Fanning say what he's gonna give you?
Well, he, he didn't even know. He didn't know they, they, that we had given it back to them. And so, but it's, it'd be nice for us to know, you know, what we own there and if, you know, we're not gonna use it, you know, sell it or do something, I don't know.
And certainly something that we can look into. Thank you.
I know they're, they're looking, they're, they asked me for a approve or support because they're getting a grant to do something on around the penalty parks and all that.
Okay.
I have two questions. The, the Cordoba Park included in his budget? The, the front park here, in front of City Hall?
Well, normal maintenance of any park is always in our budget. If there's additional things that would need to be added, then that would be a, a good conversation with Jessica and Mr. Kramer and myself. Because to me, I, I haven't heard of anything coming into that one, like additions.
The only thing that we're looking at for out here, well, for something, it's not anything, it's a lot, but it's part of the grant processes, is to get artificial grass for out here and our soccer playing fields. That is in discussions, that is what we're venturing and looking. Certainly, I've had the grant company looking for it, as well as that energy savings company because there were grants given out by the state of Arizona. But we, we didn't, it was already full or whatever, but there is the next round in November. But certainly something that we're looking for out here because I believe some of the water lines are not working out here. That's why we see the brown patches. But it certainly would benefit us if we did get that. At least for out here then, and if we do that, then certainly move it into putting in maybe, and we had talked about this, maybe putting in some tables or benches or picnic tables out there, make it more of a park. So that, that's at least what we're talking about out here. And I know that in the back, and I'll answer Ms. Parado already, what she was gonna ask about and we'll certainly look about, again, some playground equipment for the older ones in the back park here. And we certainly are looking at that as well. Not to step aside, your second question.
Well, my second question was how, where are we in, in the second phase of THA Park? As, we haven't heard anything since that first phase was finished, completed.
I didn't even, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know there was a second phase of THA Park. And that's something then where you'll have to bring back and find out. And actually then let me know so I can let the council know. Thank you for bringing that up. I didn't know.
Because it included the famous auditorium, right? Go ahead.
I have a question and I think it's in our work. What about the dog park?
That's a.
Are they giving maintenance to the dog park? I went by the other day and it's not looking good.
It's a working, yes, what they should be, and that's something that I've discussed with the director and not just that park, but other parks as well. We're moving in that direction, at least hopefully, that there should be on a daily basis for each of those in every park. So it's something that, especially even the little park down below where the newspaper boy is, that one, including carom, including every, each and every park should get the same love and attention that any park gets, or be in our soccer fields and everything else. So it's certainly, it's not off of the radar at all. It, it's certainly important because every entity or group of people around those parks utilize it. So it's important, and that dog park obviously gets used quite a bit and it certainly should be on an upkeep. I will turn that over to the director and then see if she can give us a presentation, probably in June, of the maintenance schedule. So that way then each and every one of you will know the maintenance schedule of those parks.
Yeah, because I've been having some complaints about the dog park. Thank you.
I think your message is loud and clear.
Go ahead, Jean.
That is the end of the general fund. Are there any other questions or concerns on the general fund expenditures?
Um, Mr. Kramer?
Go ahead.
Yeah, aside from the, the departments we just discussed, what I've noticed the last few days that I've been looking at it very closely is, you know, first of all, I, I thank you for not adding stuff to things that, that, you know, and I, what I mean by things is just, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna add this, aside from these two, three positions. But I, I, I like the way you focused on not adding. but I, I, I like the way you focused on not adding expenditures. What you're doing is, what I looked closely at, and correct me if I'm wrong, is like, you're trying to address, um, things and items that have not been taken care of. So it's not like we're adding, you know, projects on top of another project and on, on top of another project that hasn't been addressed. Like, you know, like right now, as simple as it is, a dock park, you know, the park should be maintained, because that's one of the quality of life services that the city residents really look up to. Where do we take our kids, our grandchildren, to the parks? And that should be just like on top of the priority list, you know, because that's what they want, the citizens, aside from infrastructure roads and safe sidewalks and stuff. But, so that, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that a true statement to say we're not adding items? We're in fact, aside from these two, three positions we've added, to make sure that, for example, Mr. Gerra has the, the help he, he can to make things more flawless and see projects, uh, become like final, you know, to them? Is that true?
Yes. Did I ax a lot of their wish lists?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
I don't wanna use that word, it's kinda harsh.
Yes, but I'll say that.
Did you ax?
Yes, I'll say it. I did, and they know that, but I told them for reasonings of why, what you just said and what you got, and what the rest of the council is seeing is, the essentials we need, yes, the other ones, not right now. Because it's important to, the expectations of the taxpayers are, you've spent a lot of money, we've given you a lot of money, show proof of what you're doing, and that's my, that will be my carryover for this next year is, prove we deserve what we get. And prove deserve in essence of keeping the parks, the streets and everything else that taxpayers use. And make sure that we do that to earn back the trust that we probably should have had. I don't know, it's still there, maybe, but it's certainly important to improve upon for each and every one of these individuals that pay taxes in this community. And I am a believer in doing your job and using the instruments and tools that we have. Granted, just coming up, that a lot of this is outdated equipment, but I, again, asked the directors, I did take out quite a bit, because it was important. I did it first, they met, I did it, took it out, and then I met with them and said, oh, this is what you're getting. So they actually had three meetings, once with that group, and then second one with me, and third from thereafter. But to bring your, bring up your point on a lot of words on there, I know, I was kind of, but I was just trying to get to the point of, yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Veto, whatever word you wanna say.
Yeah.
I wanted to just make sure that, uh, we're still gonna be looking, uh, into, you know, what we've done with the sidewalks and all that, all that, all that is in progress to continue. You know, that's, um, on our roads, the cleaning and all that, uh, and make sure that, uh, and I had, we talked about, uh, you know, the golf course, uh, trying to bring it, bring it back. Uh, I've talked to Jessica, haven't had one word, one meeting with her, but, uh, you know, we have that foundation that, that was developed, the Meadow Hills Foundation that helped us open, opening the driving range and all that. And, um, yesterday I had talks with the new businesses that are coming into, uh, with the South Thirty-two and that are looking into developing, uh, opening their new businesses here with the heavy equipment that they're gonna have, and they're very interested in supporting the city. And, uh, you know, actually, they're the ones that talked about, oh, you have a golf course. Yeah, but, you know, so much is needed, and, uh, I hope we could bring all that into the, into the picture.
Thank you, Mary. You, yes, you and I chatted about that as well, and certainly thank you for reaching out to those businesses that you met. And it's certainly on the radar, just to give you an update. I am meeting with prospective people that wanna start the restaurant. That's why we're moving forward with everything in those upkeep over there. I obviously meet with them, the contract will go through legal, of course, and bring back to council. So there is intentions of getting that restaurant open. Certainly the golf course is certainly an important aspect of this community. I think it's an essential item. It certainly will attract more, as you just said, the businesses with the mine coming and everything else. It is another extension of our activities in this community, and it's certainly important for that area. And thank you for bringing that up, because it is, it is important. But as you saw on the list, that we, what we're doing to enhance that, get it updated, so it can be rented out. We will hold on that, we will still hold the pool as the city in O'Gallus, but in that lease would be the restaurant in the outside area, just, just giving FYI of the discussion and that as well. But certainly thank you for that segue, because I thank you for bringing that up, because it's, it is, it is an important aspect.
And there's areas of, of the golf course that we're gonna, it's gonna enhance the, the projects of the housing. Because there's, there's, uh, areas where, you know, certain people in the, in the community own property around the, the golf course, that it's gonna open up, uh, availability of new, new lots and all that for, for, you know, affordable housing and.
And Mr. Doyle and Ms. Parada and, and Mr., they were invited to the, this meeting, we've, we met with them. Certainly there's, they're developing, he is developing, that group is developing nineteen lots in the area of the golf course. So they're, they're opening it up for more housing in that area, so it is a good thing. And there's more to come, there's, uh, I'm just, basically, since you're bringing this up, I'll talk about it. I met with them, I visited it, the old Baffert Ranch. It's by, uh, Mr. Morgan Thomas Jr. And I met with them, they took me over there, they showed me that, what they're planning to do. I don't know if there's still plans, but I can still bring it up, and they're looking for assistance. And the mayor and I are reaching out to Union Pacific as well. But they're, they're hoping to develop that whole area, another sixty homes developed on the northeast corner. Excuse me, the nor- yeah, the northeast corner, and the, turning the ranch into a b- a bread and breakfast. And the south area may be doing some, uh, lower renting apartments in that area. But the land that runs on Flood Plain, they are considering, and Mr. Morgan, I know that we haven't talked about, but you did branch in it, that possibly donating that land to the city of O'Gallus to create some more playing fields. So going along with what the mayor's bringing, these are certainly the conversations that he and I have had and shared when we're out there conversing with people. So there is some with Parks and Recs that there's a tie-in to it too. So thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Kramer, staying, staying on that route, you know, on Meadow Hills. Who's responsible for the, the sites going into Meadow Hill Drive? Because there's a lot of, on the, where the wetlands are at, there's a lot of dead trees and dead wood that's falling into, into water. And farther up in, in, past the, the overpass, there's a lot of old trees too that might be, uh, fire.
Yeah, that's, that's all, right. Yeah, and that's all protected area that they deemed. So I, I understand what you're saying, yes, yes.
So, so who's responsible for?
I could, I could find out if they, they would come and do some maintenance to that, but it, it is that, all that area that they control.
Yeah, because it, it gives it a bad look, a sore thumb, you know, when you go by there and you see all these dead trees.
It, it certainly falls onto the fact that we've reached out to Anthony.
Ada.
Yes, Anthony Castleman at times. And I know you've reached out to other people in there. I know that Councilman Montel's reached out to our senator who's had the meeting. It's important, you know, that kind of fell off our radar, but that certainly can bring back on our radar, because I think it's a good point. I didn't even, you know, we didn't even talk about that before, but it's certainly important.
I know that we get a lot of people from out of town coming in there for, you know, bird watchers and stuff like that, so.
Yes. Hopefully you're writing that down for me.
I'm writing them, too.
Good point, thank you.
Go ahead, Dee.
Since we're done with general fund, do you guys need to take a lunch break before we dive into the enterprise funds? I, I watched your lunch walk in a while ago. So I'm thinking, there's food in there.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
Well, I can't motion anything, I'm just suggesting.
Can you make a motion to take a break for one hour? How long you need?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes? Gives everybody them time to go also.
Directors that have already been covered, you may leave. Those of you that have expenditure list on this next one, obviously you will stay.
All in favor? All right. Break for thirty minutes.
And all that, too.
Oh, okay. Uh.
Jim, before you go on.
How, and on enterprise funds, how do you accrue reserve?
So when it comes to reserve, it's basically it's your leftover cash from the year before. It's a carryover. So for instance, for her, theirs jumped quite a bit because for fiscal year 24, we always budget our revenue coming in based on the number the state gives us. So for fiscal year 24, we actually received in $758,000 more than what the state had given us at a number. So all of that then it builds and it goes into our reserve. So and then of course, if our expenses have to be higher, it'll cut down on that sum. But that's how the reserves are built. It's the money that's come in that we haven't used and that's why we get to use it for like a rainy day.
So so part of the of the fiscal year 26 reserve is is a carryover from the previous year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, on the budgeted expenses.
Right, yeah, and that will be for every from here on out.
Yeah.
For the rest of these accounts.
Yes.
That's that's why I asked right now.
Exactly. Good question.
All right, go ahead.
The next is the overweight. For overweight fees in '25, we had budgeted $1,176,313. And for fiscal year '26, the proposed is $1,477,529. As you hear my monthly reports, I keep saying zero, 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 zero. He finally has spent a little bit of money, but we have between city manager and finance, some of the street projects that he had in Perf were moving over to overweight so that we can start to use some of those fees rather than me saying zero all the time. So we're kind of both both accounts can be used for the same thing. So we're going to start using them both.
Are we keeping the in line, you know, the overweight money should be used for certain streets where heavy equipment or industry semis and all that? Are we keeping that in mind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is our sewer. For 2025, the sewer budget was $3,246,178. And for fiscal year '26, the proposed is $6,613,653. Now that seems like it's a huge jump, but if you look at the reserves, you see why. Reserves last year was just over a million and for '26, right now it's proposed at over $3 million. There's not a lot of capital, so the less big amount of money spent, the more that goes back into reserve. So we he is asking for portable toilets, fencing at the Kino Springs and a new sewer pump. Sewer pumps at Kino Springs. Those are the only capital items that are being asked for this year. I'm sorry, Mr. Barsonas.
And then just so you know, the reserve, that's one project away from having nothing because of what we have in infrastructure. So.
Got a question. Maybe I need to be brought up on. I know that we have the wells there. How sewer pumps, how do they operate with the water wells?
How are the sewer operating with the water wells in Kino Springs? At Kino Springs? I didn't hear your question.
Well, okay, so we have water wells over there at Kino Springs. We have a few water wells, but I'm seeing here sewer pumps. Maybe one of your directors can answer that. Pardon?
There's a treatment plant there.
There is a tree, is that where that was for, Mr. Barsonas, if I remember right?
Yeah, there are sewer in Kino Springs and we treat that there. And that's where the pump is from.
For the treatment plant.
The treatment plant.
At Kino Springs.
Right where that old number 16 green was? Okay, right over there on that side?
That's that's what that's about.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Somebody spoke?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a water treatment plant.
Any other questions for sewer?
No.
Next is water. For fiscal year '25, the budget was $4,788,014. You'll see that the reserve last year or for this current year is only $111,000. For fiscal year '26, the proposed budget is $4,654,847 with no reserve. The revenues for water are too low at this point to support 100% functioning department. We have removed all capital requests out of water. We've also moved two positions, the two that are now in my or will be in my department July 1 are being moved out of the water department. The two major readers were asking council to postpone the loan payment to the general fund of the $118,000. That was where we had requested a meeting earlier this year due to a water pump that blew. They did not have the money and we loaned it to them. We're also asking to postpone the general fund allocation for one year. That's $359,000. And we're also asking to postpone the utility department allocation, which is $170,000. As the numbers sit right now with all of those still in there, it is $369,280 in the negative and this is the only department that cannot be balanced at this point.
We we spoke about this two, I think two years ago that we were going in this direction and this is where we're here now.
Yes, we are. Sanitation department. In 2025, the overall budget was $3,987,166 with the reserve of $108,917. '26, the proposed budget is $4,567,764 with no capital in '26. Any questions? Next is fleet. Fleet in '25 was $1,706,814. And for '26, it's $1,197,179. The only capital in there are for a drum brake lathe for $7,000, an AC recharge machine at $7,000, and this is where you see the trolley maintenance and refurb at $50,000.
Have we looked into any EV chargers? You know, there's grants for that, Joe.
I don't think anybody's looked for any grants in that area, Mr. Mayor.
Not that I'm aware of.
But again, that's something that certainly that we could because again, all directors have access to this program or any grants that you may be speaking, especially the grants that you even said with Senator Kelly and such, they are offered through this program that we have. So anything that you may see, we should be able to see as well.
What about going, you know, have we looked into doing any EV vehicles in fleet?
For charging?
Well, vehicles and chargers.
Yeah, I haven't even thought of that. Something I'm sure we could.
Yeah, maybe the the less hardworking, you know, that run around our town that could make it a one a one charge per day and stuff like that, we could.
I think we could certainly look at that and since you brought that up, there are grants to get electrical vehicles for organizations. So we certainly probably could look for that. I'm sure we probably get a very good deal currently with Mr. Musk's, his vehicles, so maybe.
In the past, we had an electric vehicle charging station here right outside the building.
It's still there.
And there was the state initiative they were going to install along the interstate I-19 was supposed to get. I haven't heard where the state is moving in that direction. I think it got paused because Pima County was going in that direction as well. But certainly, Mayor, it's certainly something we can certainly bring up.
I have a quick question. On the trolley, once it's refurbished and ready to run, where do we have room in the budget for a driver for it?
That's a good question, but I'm sure that we'll be able to utilize one of our team members to do this. And I think that it would be mainly, you know, we'll have to figure that out with Juan, maybe the with the Nogals Rides and whoever's doing that, we can certainly do it. I don't think, I think we'll sync it with whatever tourism buses are coming down to go along with that, at least for starters. Mr. Kramer, could you give us?
Of the fiscal year twenty six, reserve is is a carryover from the previous year?
Yes. Yes, on the budgeted expenses.
Right, and yeah, and that will be for every from here on out. For the rest of these accounts.
Yes.
Exactly. Good question.
The next is the overweight. For overweight fees in twenty five, we had budgeted one million, one hundred and seventy six thousand, three hundred and thirteen. And for fiscal year twenty six, the proposed is one million, four hundred and seventy seven thousand, five hundred and twenty nine. As you hear my monthly reports, I keep saying zero, 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 zero. He finally has spent a little bit of money, but we have between city manager and finance, some of the street projects that he had in HERF were moving over to overweight so that we can start to use some of those fees rather than me saying zero all the time. So we're kind of both both accounts can be used for the same thing. So we're gonna start using them both.
Are we keeping the in line, you know, the overweight money should be used for certain streets where heavy equipment or industry, semis and all that? Are we keeping that in mind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is our sewer. For twenty twenty five, the sewer budget was three million, two hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and seventy eight dollars. And for fiscal year twenty six, the proposed is six million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty three. Now that seems like it's a huge jump, but if you look at the reserves, you see why. Reserves last year was just over a million and for twenty six, right now it's proposed at over three million. There's not a lot of capital, so the less big amount of money spent, the more that goes back into reserve. So we, he is asking for portable toilets, fencing at the Kino Springs and a new sewer pump. Sewer pumps at Kino Springs. Those are the only capital items that are being asked for this year. I'm sorry, Mr. Barsness.
And then just so you know, the reserve, that's one project away from having nothing. Because of what we have in infrastructure. So.
Got a question. Maybe I need to be brought up on. I know that we have the wells there. How sewer pumps, how do they operate with the water wells?
How are the sewer operating with the water wells in Kino Springs? I didn't hear your question.
Well, okay, so we have water wells over there. At Kino Springs. We have a few water wells. But I'm seeing here sewer pumps, maybe one of your directors can answer that.
Pardon? There's a treatment plant there.
There is a tree, there's that. That was for Mr. Barsness, if I remember right?
Yeah, there is for Kino Springs and we treat that there. That's what the clock is for.
For the treatment plant.
Right where that old number sixteen green was? Okay, right over there on that side?
That's what that's about.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Somebody spoke?
Okay.
Yeah, there's a water treatment plant.
Any other questions for sewer?
No.
Next is water. For fiscal year twenty five, the budget was four million, seven hundred and eighty eight thousand and fourteen dollars. You'll see that the reserve last year or for this current year is only a hundred and eleven thousand. For fiscal year twenty six, the proposed budget is four million, six hundred and fifty four thousand, eight hundred and forty seven with no reserve. The revenues for water are too low at this point to support a hundred percent functioning department. We have removed all capital requests out of water. We've also moved two positions, the two that are now in my or will be in my department July one are being moved out of the water department. The two major readers. We're asking council to postpone the loan payment to the general fund of the hundred and eighteen thousand. That was where we had requested a meeting earlier this year due to a water pump that blew. They did not have the money and we loaned it to them. We're also asking to postpone the general fund allocation for one year, that's three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. And we're also asking to postpone the utility department allocation, which is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. As the numbers sit right now with all of those still in there, it is three hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars in the negative, and this is the only department that cannot be balanced at this point.
We spoke about this two, I think two years ago that we were going in this direction and this is where we're here now.
Yes, we are. Sanitation department. In twenty twenty five, the overall budget was three million, nine hundred and eighty seven thousand, one hundred and sixty six dollars with the reserve of a hundred and eight thousand, nine seventeen. Twenty six, the proposed budget is four million, fifty six, four million, fifty six thousand, seven hundred and sixty four with the reserve of seven hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and sixty three, and there is no capital in twenty six. Any questions? Next is fleet. Fleet in twenty five was one million, seven hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And for twenty six, it's one million, nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollars. The only capital in there are for a drum brake lathe for seven thousand, an AC recharge machine at seven thousand, and this is where you see the trolley maintenance and refurb at fifty thousand. Sure.
Have we looked into any EV chargers? You know, there's grants for that, Joe.
I don't think anybody's looked for any grants in that area, Mr. Mayor.
Not that I'm aware of.
But again, that's something that certainly that we could, because again, all directors have access to this program or any grants that you may be speaking, especially the grants that you even said with Senator Kelly and such, they are offered through this program that we have. So anything that you may see, we should be able to see as well.
What about going, you know, have we looked into doing any EV vehicles in fleet?
For charging?
Well, vehicles and chargers.
Yeah, I haven't even thought of that. Something I'm sure we could.
Yeah, maybe the the less hardworking, you know, that run around our town that could make it a one, a one charge per day and stuff like that, we could.
I think we could certainly look at that and since you brought that up, there are grants to get electrical vehicles for organizations. So we certainly probably could look for that. I'm sure we probably get a very good deal currently with Mr. Musk's, his vehicles, so maybe.
Past, we had an electric vehicle charging station here right outside the building.
It's still there.
And there was the state initiative, they were going to install along the interstate I nineteen was supposed to get. I haven't heard where the state is moving in that direction. I think it got paused because Pima County was going in that direction as well. But certainly, Mayor, it's certainly something we can certainly bring up.
I have a quick question. On the trolley, once it's refurbished and ready to run, where do we have room in the budget for a driver for it?
That's a good question, but I'm sure that we'll be able to utilize one of our team members to do this. And I think that it would be mainly, you know, we'll have to figure that out with Juan, maybe the with the Nogales rides and whoever's doing that, we can certainly do it. I don't think, I think we'll sync it with whatever tourism buses are coming down to go along with that, at least for starters.
Mr. Kramer, could you give us a report, probably on the past ten years, how much money we've spent into this trolley? I mean, fifty grand? I know we put in some more money in past years, so can you just give us sort of like a report of how many, how much money we've put into this trolley?
I can certainly get a report from Alfonso, he did say that he, it is right now usable. How usable, he said, is to maybe drive to point A to point B. But for what we want to do, we may have to repurpose it. Certainly, I'm just letting you know what he told me is it's usable, but not what we want to do it. So whatever money we spent to it, again, yes, I can certainly get that to you.
Next is the warehouse. In twenty twenty five, the budget was a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty three dollars. In twenty six, it's a hundred and twenty four thousand, eight hundred and thirty five. There's only two employees in the warehouse and they're the ones who do all the ordering for the city. The utility is next. In twenty twenty five, the budget was four hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and sixty four. And in twenty twenty six, it's five hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty seven.
This includes all of our utilities that I was referring to, correct?
Which ones are you?
Like streetlights.
Streetlights are under HERF. All streetlights are under the HERF budget.
Okay, with that said, if you can get for council, because if we do go out, break down for the last year of HERF spent on streetlights, so they can see the comparison.
Sure.
Because I think it's important that we show what the savings are, if, with and when we do, if we get that grant and how it's it's imperative that we continue doing this, going this direction. Utility expenditures are for all of our buildings?
Utility expenditures are basically it's the people that run all of the other departments that are over there except for streets, which is run by Mr. Geta and public work, I mean, community development, which is run by Hector Tapia. So utilities is our sewer, water, sanitation, fleet and warehouse. This is, this is the department where there's five, five employees are stationed in this department. But they oversee all of the rest of the departments. That's why we have the utility allocations from those departments that come back into this department. So utility, the utility department is basically a wash, what goes out comes back in.
Right, I'm just saying for purposes, when we do this publicly, we will, next time, that's probably my oversight, and I apologize, that we list what expenditures, especially for something like this.
Sure.
Mr. Kramer, last time I checked, what we spent on on public lighting is between three hundred and twenty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on public lighting.
And I think, and certainly when I meet with TEP, the people, they're gonna have that report because I asked them for that. But I just wanted to make sure what we have compares to what they have. I just was thinking aloud, but thank you for bringing that up because it's important of what this energy savings could cost or save us. And with that said, just so you know, that the energy savings that we're looking at also, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because it's also, they've already done the study for all of our buildings and our HVAC units, which needs to be replaced, which ones are not efficient. So that will be, I'll bring that forward as well. Because we did have an engineer from this company, an energy company, do a thorough study of all buildings.
I think that the biggest bleeding that we have that we're throwing a lot of money away is because we have no control of of the streetlights that are out, which ones belong to us, which ones belong to Unisource. It's always been one of those things that we don't exactly know who owns them or, you know, some of them are not being fixed, but we're still being charged. So it's a good thing that we're taking care of this.
Exactly, and if we partner with Unisource and TEP in this meeting with them, that discussion has been when I did have to speak to them. And certainly now I'm bringing that up again because it's important to understand that maybe they'll give us some, some, I don't know if Unisource ever gives us breaks, but certainly working and getting this structure, because even Juan and I have talked about that, that we have the poles, but it's Unisource light. And or we have the pole and light, but it's on Unisource, you know, so we're trying to get that changed wrong. Because again, that goes back to all the years, 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 even prior to Juan being in that position, that there really wasn't a steady accounting of who owns what, and we're trying to get that cleaned up. Thank you.
Housing is next. For twenty twenty five, the budget was one million, ninety two thousand and forty three dollars. And for twenty six, it's one million, one hundred and forty eight thousand, six hundred and sixty four. The big increase was the building insurance. We went back through this year with AMR RP. And we did kind of an internal audit on which buildings actually belong to which departments. And that's how we separated who actually should be paying for what building insurance. Maritza already knew that this was coming, so it was not a surprise to her when I told her the number. And of course, housing never has capital with us, it's always through their own budget.
Her commission.
Yeah, with the commission. And then the last slide that we have for today, it's just the health insurance. I just wanted to put it up here so you guys could see how much the employees compared to the city pays for their health insurance, whether it's single family, how much we pay per person over the year. This three point five million dollars for two thousand and twenty six, this is basically an in and out. Summit sends us like the claims and says, this is how much you owe for the claims, and then it comes out. So this is never a moneymaker, it's an in and out. And so I just put that on there so you guys could see family and single coverage, what is covered. And that is it for the, that, is there any questions on the enterprise or internal funds?
Well, I'm gonna bring up one just point for health insurance. We did reach out to our health insurance provider, we being part of our team. He did reach out to Lori and what right now, what we've heard is the increase was one dollar?
One dollar per employee a month, we believe.
Right now, that's what we're, just so you know where we can figure it, and we'll have that next figure in to when we meet again. And because of, this is a budget study session. I believe that you're clerk, and we decided that we will try to do for May twenty first, is that correct, on a Wednesday? So you'll be here, Joe, and our interim HR director will be here for that as well. So that will be the next discussion of our next topics of what we need to cover. Granted, what we covered here, if you as council want to meet with me, certainly, you know, my office door is always open. Certainly come and chat with me, we can discuss this. Because then for the next budget study session will be another study session. The goal in is to have everything encompassed to approve budget by our June council meeting. And with that said, we already said in the beginning, we will discuss the next budget study session about that other topic that we did not, that I did not share with directors, but I will share with directors this next time around. At least it's tentative, I'm not holding you accountable and saying, this is what it is, it's just a figure. So, and that is with with the raises, what we looked at, what I said a bit earlier about that. But it's certainly, I would like feedback of what you think of what you see right now as far as that goes to. Because again, where nothing is set in stone, I'm not putting everybody into that, I certainly need the feedback from council. And I will work with HR as well, because we're gonna get that, certainly with finance, and I will meet with the directors as well. So I just want to let you know where we're at with that topic, because I know we're running short on time on that. But it will be a study session on May twenty first, and we'll do the same format, but we'll focus on whatever we get cleaned up with this today, and then we'll certainly look at that other. And then certainly the health insurance will be at least an update on that, where we are with that topic as well. All right, so thank you. At least as far as the study session, we're not done yet, but I just wanted to say we're done with the study session.
Yeah, Mayor, I have to excuse myself, I'm leaving.
We're all good. May twenty first, isn't there a water research conference? The twentieth and twenty first?
May twenty first?
Well, the twentieth, it's in Tucson, the twentieth and twenty first. That's probably where we're gonna be meeting the new IBWC director.
The one that, the new, the president appointed?
Yeah.
What time is that?
Well, it's, it's.
Two days?
I've got it for twentieth and twenty first, is that correct? Twenty ninth?
Then we could, we could push it to Wednesday before.
May, do we do? Get ahead, Mayo. Water research, resource research center.
We could do it May fourteenth. We'll do it May fourteenth, so we don't have to worry about this water, that's okay, May fourteenth then.
Yeah.
I know you may not be here, but somebody, Judy, will certainly. Yeah, I know, but your clerk may not, but she may not be, oh, okay. All right, May fourteenth, thank you for doing that, all right, we, Mayor, I'll turn to.
All right, I move to adjourn this meeting? Do we have the?
We got some other items on here. We got a couple of orders you have to approve.
Where are we going? Sorry about that. That was.
Well, the orders will get done quick.
Do orders, sorry about that. Orders, one, consideration possible action of order twenty twenty five dash zero four dash zero one three. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing a budget transfer of an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand from the general fund reserve to the facility department for the purchase of, the purchase and installation of a new fire suppression system to be located in the Nogales Library, Palau Building, Nogales Senior Center location and Parks and Rec building through Johnson's Control Fire Protection.
So move, seconds.
Any discussion?
Just to let you know, council, that's the finalization of all buildings. You had approved the first phase, that's the second phase, so all of our buildings will be in line. Thank you.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number six, discussion item, discussion direction of possible action in kind support submitted by Saro Estras movement for Nogales Marathon and Health Fair to be held at two one four Mardi Avenue on April twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, Elgando Munoz applicant. Any discussion, that's the marathon this weekend. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Item number two, discussion direction, possible action in kind support submitted by Cultura Art Committee of Nogales, Arizona, for the Fiesta de Mayo to be held at Karen Park on May third, twenty twenty five. Sandra Court.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Item number three, discussion and possible action by mayor and council on adopting city cemetery rules and policies for the Parks and Recreation Department. Second, any discussion?
I just want to say very.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, and I know that Mr. Resty's really worked hard in making this possible because it's going to make a lot of residents' lives easier when they're dealing with a cemetery, so thank you.
Certainly welcome, and hopefully, Mr. Rada, you got your answers, because she had some answers, so we answered those as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Couple of questions. On the cemetery rules, there's there's an item there where it says that you can only have two people buried in one plot. And regarding the cremations, how many are you allowed? Only two?
Cremations?
I understand it.
I would have to go back and look at it specifically, I didn't have the rules in front of me, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Because it says you're only allowed for two burial, people buried at the same plot unless the owner is okay with having more burials here as far as cremations.
I don't think cremations, we are holding accountable of who's in whatever urn, and whatever they put in, they can put in.
How many urns, I guess, I guess I'm.
Well, they have room for one urn if they want to put more of the family members into that area.
Oh, okay.
Right, and I think the burials are just for like you, a baby and parent or something, something to that effect, it's not two adults.
Because I know, I know that right now, as it is, there's some plots there that have for urns, but they have like for six, seven, eight family members. Is that gonna be allowed?
The niche is, you can't expand the size of the niche. You can fit however many, you know, if you have a small urn, you know, it just depends.
If there's a, yeah, it's this space, so if you had a there, I'm not saying a water bottle, but if you had different types of urns, you have that space. So that there's.
Doesn't matter how many.
Right, exactly, we're not going to restrict. I mean, if it's overbearing and coming out, then we'll go back and say, no, it's coming out of this area. But I haven't gone directly look at the how it's gonna be functioning on that. I have looked at saying, okay, there's one, two, three spots, that's what'll be available. Because then they close up too.
And then, you know, if there's anything, we could always amend it.
Right, exactly.
At the future.
It was mainly to make sure of. It's a good point, yeah, but it was mainly of, of who was burying where, where they were driving, who was cleaning, where were the trees, now we're gonna at least have a better manicured, and you see, we're paving the road over there as well. So we're trying to get that back, or get it to what it should be.
So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Move to, move into executive session.
A second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, we'll move to executive session. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We'll move to executive session.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, meeting adjourned, thank you, thank you everybody.
Thank you everybody.
About voting for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Under Roberts rules and stuff, the chair can just say, having no further business, this meeting...